Evening, our completed greenhouse gas inventory update for you for the year 2023. We're not quite there yet, and I'm going to get into that in a little bit. But so we still wanted to stop by since you are so gracious to give us some time in your meeting and give you an update on where things stand, when you can expect that finished inventory from us. And then perhaps most excited, most exciting, what we're working on with Kat and Madeline for the spring. And then we welcome your input on, on, on that work and how we can make it as useful to the city of Harrisburg as possible. All right, let's see if I can move my own slides. Okay. I don't know how many people in the room are familiar with the local climate action program, so I just wanted to give a very brief overview. This program was born out of DEP's Energy Programs Office. I think Chris Naif might be in the room. You're going to hear Chris's name a couple of times here, but Chris works in that office. It was started by Heidi Kunch, and the idea around the initial program that ran for three years was that we would part, DEP would create sort of a partnership between local universities and colleges, maybe a faculty member and a handful of students, and a municipality that wanted to do climate action work and try to co-locate them together. And also part of that partnership was ICLAY Local Governments for Sustainability. They importantly have the software that we use to actually calculate the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, do forecasting, and they provide other resources for climate action planning. And so in that partnership, those first couple of years, ICLAY provided some training webinars, but really it was on each of the faculty members at each of those universities and colleges to move these things along. Starting in 2022, 2023 academic year, the program, it came to Penn State, and we have been so grateful to have the opportunity to, to lead this. And so Peter Buck and I have been co-directing the program. And now the way we run it is we have two permanent Penn State courses dedicated to the program. And students in the fall enroll in a course related to greenhouse gas inventorying, and in the spring, climate action planning. And we then provide curriculum around these activities and supervise the inventorying work and help flesh these projects out for climate planning. DEP's Energy Programs Office still very graciously covers the cost of the ICLAY membership for the year for each of the participating communities to have access to that software that we use. And with that access to software also comes technical assistance from ICLAY employees. So ICLAY is still providing some training for our students. They go through some of the nitty gritty about factor sets and forecasting scenarios and other things in their software that are, they know a little bit better than we do. And they provide technical assistance throughout the inventorying process. And importantly, we make sure that each of these inventories, including the one we're working on for Harrisburg, goes through a thorough QA QC review before we hand that and the inventory report off to you all so that you can have confidence in the data and methodological approaches that we've used. So this is your LCAP team. There's Peter and I. We are both at Penn State, obviously. Kat and Madeline, who you, who you just met. And then we are joined by three awesome students. So we have Hope Glaze. Hope is an undergraduate who is at the University Park Campus where Peter and I are located. And then we also have Brandon Shrek and Ethan Merrill. Brandon and Ethan are world campus students in a program in energy and sustainability policy. So Brandon's coming to us from Georgia, and Ethan has just relocated from California to Tennessee. So while Hope, Peter, and I are planning to come deliver the final climate planning report in April in person, we will still need to, to zoom Brandon and Ethan in. So like I said, that fall inventorying work, which in a perfect world would be wrapped up and tied with a bow for you by the end of the fall, really revolves around creating this inventory. And that means we are trying to account for all of the greenhouse gas emissions that the city of Harrisburg is responsible for, that happen within your boundary, the electricity that we buy for things that happen in Harrisburg, all of these things. This is really time intensive, and we are finding that out in spades this, this year. So collecting, interpreting, and analyzing that data really takes up the bulk of our time. And as I'll tell you in a minute, we have hit a snag with your electricity data that we received from your utility. And we are in the process of getting that sorted out, but we can't trust the numbers until we do. Then in the spring semester, and Brandon, Ethan, Hope, and, and Peter and I have all started working on this with Kat and Madeline, we take those results of the inventory and we say, okay, what are we going to do with this information? It's great to know how, what these emissions are, but what can we actually do? What actions can we take in our community that have important co-benefits that might be important to our residents and, and business owners and stakeholders that actually pull, pull greenhouse gas emissions down? And so that's, we are just now kind of buttoning up what we think that we are going to work on with, with, with our team this semester. So your inventory is almost done. Here's a really, a map that plagues me, to be honest. And I have one of these for eight of the 13 communities that we are working with in the LCAP program, this, this cohort. Outlined in red is the jurisdictional boundary of the city of Harrisburg. I'm sure that's a shape that looks familiar to all of you. All of those other colored blobs are zip codes. The utility company has given us your electricity data by zip code. And as you can see, these things do not line up at all. So right now, we are trying to downscale that with some degree of accuracy and confidence. The problem that we are currently trying to, to work our way out of is that we just got one big lump number for residential electricity, commercial electricity, and industrial electricity for all of the plausibly adjacent and intersecting zip codes. I'm working with PPNL to try to get that data disaggregated so that at least we get it by each of those zip codes. Because then what we can do is, is it is knowable information to know, okay, how many people in any given zip code that is partially within the Harrisburg boundary live within that Harrisburg boundary? What percentage of the total zip code population is that? And then can we just apply that percentage of the, of the electricity consumption in that zip code to the city of Harrisburg? It is an imperfect and incomplete estimate, but it is much better than what we have now, which is drastically overestimating what your electricity responsibility really is. And so we don't want to give you an inflated number. And so that's why tonight we are not presenting the results of the inventory itself, but we wanted to stop by and explain why we can't. The other important piece that we need to untangle as soon as we hear back from our friends at PPNL is this is not your first inventory. And so we need to make sure that the electricity data from your inventory that was completed last year with, with our colleagues at Johns Hopkins and the previous inventory that was done by, by Chris Naif, we need to make sure those are all apples. Because we want, we want you to be able to do an annual comparison across these inventories to get an accurate snapshot of what the trajectory of emissions is. And so we will make sure that when we provide our inventory report, that we're very explicit about the methodological approach here and that we note any differences between the previous inventories. And then, you know, if, if we want to try to align them better, we can, we can adapt, we can edit those in ClearPath and make notes about it. So that's the kind of inventory pickup we've had. And like I said, you are in good company. We are working with lots of PPNL customers that had the same problem and also FirstEnergy over in the western part of the state. So we're, we're doing our best. PICO gets a gold star because they do just by default provide us with the data by township boundary. So for the spring climate planning, and I would welcome particularly Madeline and Kat to jump in here. You know, we've, we've had several conversations about what might be some priority actions for this work in the spring. And here are just three of the broad topic areas that we hope to provide the city with further information on as it relates to your climate action planning. The first is this idea of a feasibility assessment for rooftop solar for some of your municipal buildings. We understand that there's interest and curiosity about this, but that no one yet has a good enough understanding of the cost benefit analysis of what that would look like. And so we would like to dig into that more because that would be one possible, that's, that's often a common early first step in, in climate planning. So, so we're going to look into that for you. We're also going to look at some electric vehicle case studies related to municipal, municipal fleet transitions to EVs. And that doesn't mean buying EVs for all of the fleet of everything you do for the city right now, but it might mean, well, maybe what would it take to swap out one of our code vehicles or one of our parks and rec vehicles? Is that worth it? Would it pay for itself? Would it be a pain? How much, how much charge range, how much range do you lose in the winter? You know, all of those things. So we're going to try to find some other similarly sized municipalities who have done this work, get some case studies, maybe make some contacts for people for you to talk with in their public works departments, things like that, to just better understand the landscape, to, to feel out if it might be a good fit for something you want to explore in the future. And then the other thing that we understand that there might be interest on is understanding what opportunities there are for nature-based solutions in the community, right? So we can think of things like tree planting and, and, and other things like that. But we were looking particularly at possibly identifying some spaces for community gardens in the parks and really trying to, trying to pull these things into other work and plans that you already have going. Because I think that's really the, the primary key to success. You all are already doing a lot to, to make Harrisburg an even better place to live and work. And so we just want to, to tie into that and to dovetail anything that we do to be complementary to existing programs or planned programs that, that you have coming down the pike. So that's kind of the very quick version of where we are. And I would just end by saying, you know, what's really neat about this program and why we're so grateful that DEP continues to support it and make it possible for us is that everybody wins. You know, your students here are getting really valuable real-world experience that, that they don't get when we just give them hypothetical assignments in a class, right? Those things just collect digital dust in a drop box. They get to work with real-life people like you who need help, want help doing something related to climate. And so that's really inspiring and really exciting for us. And, you know, we recognize that everybody has too much work to do. And so there might be a lot of this work that you want to do, you want to understand better, but your time is stretched thin, and there's only so many cats and Madelins out there. And then so if we can provide help in moving your climate action ball down the field even a little bit, then we're happy to do that. So with that, we'll take any questions that you have. And we look forward to coming back at your convenience to provide you with the full inventory report.
Thank you, ladies. Do you have anything to add to the presentation or any final thoughts there before we open it up for questions?
So we would like your input on some of what we'd like to do for spring because we know that in the past, especially before the pandemic, there was a plan for the solar panels. And we do technically have access to them, just we don't know what condition they're in. And I do know that there's a big parks, parks recreation thing going on with a lot of the parks. We'd like to try to include some community gardens in that. And we'd like your opinions because you guys rule.
Oh, thanks.
I guess something that I wanted to add is that we were also planning on doing a climate opinion survey for the community just to try and get some opinions from Harrisburg residents of what they would like to see happen within the city, what's most important to them, and just get some demographics maybe that would help us with our work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. I can't believe I forgot to mention the survey. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm just going to open it up to my colleagues if, to determine if anyone has any questions for you. I will begin with our Parks Recreation and Enrichment Chair, Councilwoman Rawls.
Good evening to you all. Thank you for being here and thank you for that excellent presentation. It was very exciting to listen to and seeing the work that's going to be done and wanting to have the residents participate, getting their ideas, I think is really important. So I think the survey was great when you mentioned that. I was going to ask how, were you going to get the residents' thoughts? I would also say meet them where they're at, too. So I think maybe having community meetings, knocking on doors, because not everybody is going to complete a survey on the computer. Maybe sending them and our trash, their trash bills and letting them know where they can return the survey. I think having multiple ways to get the survey done would be great because I think they'll have a lot of ideas. And like you said, you already had some from a previous, I think you said that you had a paper or with some ideas, but, but not from the community. I think they were already, okay. And is that something we all have, or is that something that can be shared just to see?
I can, I can send you a copy of the comprehensive plan tomorrow.
Oh, it's in the comprehensive plan, then that.
Also, our partners with Heart of the Hill and Tri-County Community Action would be more than happy to probably help us pass out the survey because they do a lot of the door-to-door, especially in South Allison Hill. I could, we could try to do some more community partnerships with like friends of Midtown. So, but you know, as my sociology professor said, you have to listen to what the people want and not make what you think they want.
I would agree more than anything. Amen to that. Yes, you do. Yes, you do have a smart professor. So I agree. I would also be willing to help you pass out surveys, knock on doors. Any way I can help, please, you know, let me know. Because I think that is a great way to see what, what we need in the community. And what would be great, and I like how you said you would like to, as we innovate the parks, how can we place in this information there and integrate it? So that would be great. So thank you. That's it for me. I don't have any questions. Just, I'm here, please. I want to help.
Thank you.
May I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you so much for having so much interest in the survey. The surveys are really important in the, in these planning activities. And as I'm a fellow elected official, I've been a township official and I serve on the State College Area School District School Board now. So when we get good, high-quality survey results back, it really helps us guide our policies and our investments the best way that we can. So thank you. We have a battery of, of surveys that have been administered in communities around Pennsylvania, including City of Scranton, Little Tene Mechanicsburg. So we have a, a way that, you know, a really good set there that our students and Kat and company can, can work with. And, you know, if, if you need it for review before it goes out, of course. You know, we want as much review and interest in elected, from elected officials that we can get. And thank you for saying, let's go out, put it with the trash bill, like whatever it is, because that face-to-face ends up really mattering. So I just want to give you, you kudos for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Not much of a question. Thank you, President Bowers. So again, thank you guys for the presentation. I, I can just say, I was just having conversations earlier today about environmental justice, which is very important for our community. So I want to commend you on focusing on this area, being soldiers on this, on that front. Because, you know, as Councilwoman Rawls said earlier, we are dealing with so many things right now, and we don't have adequate people to, to look at all of these areas, but that is a huge one. You know, growing up here, a lot of children are being born with asthma, just some of the environmental and some of the other things that we do to ourselves. But this also helps making sure we have clean air, clean water. So I would like to connect you to some of the stakeholders in our community that really, really are paying attention to this versus the survey. Again, some people may not have the time to fill it out. They've got so many other things going on, but people are really worried about this. So, you know, and then staying in communication with you guys about the survey, if you're not getting the answers or the results that you want. Because as you said before, they are very important. It's almost like census. When the census come out, people don't want to fill it out. And they don't know that, you know, by not filling those things out, you know, you're, you're taking money away from your community. So I think this is an area that I think we are really concerned about, especially in today's world. So go ahead, man.
Councilmembers, would it help if I sent out an email introduction introducing you to Brandy and Peter and you guys electronically so that you can share stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay, I will do that tomorrow morning.
Yeah, so I have no other things, but I, I thank you guys again for being on this front. It's something that is very important to all of us here. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you all for your presentation and for being here tonight. I look forward to see what the results turn out to be. In any way that we can help, we're here to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. I just wanted to thank you for your work also. It's, the presentation was very interesting. And one question from me, your collection, your interpreting and analyzing data, does that include any poisonous gases? You know, the pollution is so bad from all of the gases and different things that we breathe in. Does your work include any observations on those things?
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a really good question. So the only gases that we are really looking at are the greenhouse gases that, that make the climate warmer. They are air pollutants, so it's carbon dioxide. Methane and nitrous oxide are the three we primarily look at. We get into refrigerants a little bit, but I think you are probably talking about things like particulate matter and, and stuff like that. And we are not currently cataloging those as, as part of this inventory.
However, we do have the students do a, a, an investigation using what's called the EJ screen. The EJ screen is put together by the Environmental Protection Agency. I don't know quite honestly what the fate of the EJ screen is under the new administration. However, our students used it during the former administration. And they were to look at cumulative health impacts that are done at the census track level. And so our students are certainly aware of where compounding threats and health risks would be overlaid with demographic information so that they can understand where some of the areas of need are from in, in your community. And so they can influence some of the, the policy or programmatic suggestions that we might have. But we would be very open to any material or any concerns that you would have to, so that we can be more responsive to what it is that the city needs. You know, Brandy and I certainly share a, I guess I would call it an ethic and a, and a practice that, that we really have to do our best to work for, you know, a, all people and particularly marginalized people and people who are put at environmental risk.
Thank you for that. Are you able to share any of the information that the students have collected in that area with the council? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Of course.
Welcome back.
Sorry. Real quick, Councilwoman Davis. So the Department of Environmental Protection has a similar tool at the state level called Penn and Biro Screen. So even if we do happen to lose EJ screen from the federal government, we do have something similar at the state level that could be utilized for a similar purpose.
Councilwoman Davis, if this is something of interest to you, I can make it one of my projects for the, in the Planning Bureau. I'd be interested in pursuing this and getting information from Brandy and Peter or doing my own research on this. So if that's something you'd like, I can try to make it a special project this year.
Anything that could help the health of all of us and make us aware of what's out there, what we're inhaling and different things would be helpful. So thank you for offering.
No problem. It's what I went to school for.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for being here and for participating, those that are virtual. We look forward to the follow-up presentation and any assistance we can provide with your spring climate planning. So thank you again for your participation.
Thank you so much for having us. Take care.
Thank you, you too.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next, we will open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, Angel Fox. I'm here on behalf of Senator Kim. And I have my staff with me. Yanira, she's our legislative liaison. And then we have Cory, who is our communication specialist. We just wanted to let the community know and council know, good night, well, good evening, council, let you guys know that we're here at the senate level now. And anything we can do to help you guys out, we will, we will do and try. No, we don't have money, but we're here to offer any other assistance. So we just wanted to extend that to you guys tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, let me see if there's, is there anyone else in the middle section first that would like to offer public comment? Okay, anyone to my left? Ms. Hughes, take your time. It's no problem. You're fine.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cheryl Hughes. I am a resident of the community, been a resident for 53 years. My reasons for here again tonight, I lost three sons to gun violence. I lost my baby boy 4th of July night into the fifth in front of the H Mac in Midtown Harrisburg. Before this incident happened, I was back and forth to the mayor, Ms. Wanda Williams, for help about the shooting at my baby on numerous occasions. She asked me to come to her with a plan, which I presented, and she was never in her office to follow through with her promise. If I came back with the plan, she would help me. That never happened. My baby boy, Azar Hughes, they killed him after leaving in an event at the H Mac that turned into stop the gun violence, that he actually watched his two brothers go across their screen, not knowing that my son was going to be the next victim to gun violence as he left out the door. Only if the mayor would have kept her promise, now my son's blood's on her hands. She didn't keep her promise when I begged her as well as everyone else. So last week after meeting, I've talked with Mr. Sam Soluski. Correct me if I'm wrong, that y'all appointed me to. He said someone was going to get in contact with me with, no one has got back with me yet. Where's my answers that I want from Mayor Wanda Williams? As a mother, this isn't right. As a mother, three sons dead to gun violence and no answers still since nine thirteen fourteen, five ten fifteen, Mother's Day, to seven oh five twenty-four. As a mother, nobody going to answer to me and I need H Mac held accountable as well. Miss Wanda Williams, mayor, she dropped the ball on my baby boy. As a mother, I have no more baby boys, no more heartbeats. What am I supposed to do? Because once again, I'm back here again and no one's has got back to me, said anything to me, reached out to me. And like I told you last week, my son wasn't able to walk the stage because he was murdered. I had to walk that stage for him. Not fair. As mothers, I know y'all mothers, I know some of y'all's mothers. Like I told you, I went for Governor Josh Shapiro, where Patty Kim came out and been on my side ever since. I don't know what I'm supposed to do. I mean, everybody's lost, I'm lost. I buried three babies. What mother deserves that? What I was taught, they supposed to bury us. I lost all three of my babies to gun violence from the South Side, Fourteenth and Swat Air to Midtown with no answers. I got three death certificates. I don't know nothing. I just got three death certificates. That's it. I don't got nothing, three death certificates. Also, something occurred in the process of me asking about my baby boy that I want to address to y'all personally. But y'all see this?
Ms. Hughes, if you could stay after, I did make some contact with somebody that I wanted to share with you.
He was out with his girlfriend. They played a father figure to her son Fourth of July night. They shot him dead right in front of her. Right in front of her. My son had a future. He's on his way to Central Penn College, they money theme for football and basketball. He want to take up real estate. He's cheated out of life. Once again, one of my sons cheated out of life. Now I've got no answers, none. As a mother, this is what I gotta deal with. Nobody got answered to me. It's not fair to me. I birthed six kids and I only got three.
Ms. Hughes, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I appreciate you. Thank y'all.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind waiting after the meeting, we can talk further. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer a public comment? I don't want to miss anyone.
I've got one more question. What happened to the gentleman that was helping me last week to get in with the mayor? What happened to that, Mr. Soluski?
Oh, he's, he's back in the back of the room. He's on the other side.
Not allowed to make that on public records because I want to know what happened.
Oh, that I'm not sure of. So, um, let's, let's just wait and talk after the meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further public comment, we will move forward with our meeting agenda as printed. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. On Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the Administration Committee met to discuss one resolution, Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services. I shared that Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-five was reintroduced at the request of Harrisburg City Council. I shared the total number of hours and the total fee for sign language interpreting services that were utilized last year. The total number of hours was thirty-two hours. The total cost was five thousand, seven hundred, forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. I did note that the Office of City Council and the Office of the City Clerk were expecting one additional invoice from November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, which has not yet been received. For everyone's reference, in the contract, we pay mileage for interpreters to come to, uh, City Hall and meetings. Two hours and over require two interpreters. That's why you'll generally see the interpreters alternating back and forth. Council members did not have any questions regarding Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-five. I'm asking my colleagues to support Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-five to continue to provide inclusive efforts to ensure all residents of the City of Harrisburg receive the information shared during Harrisburg City Council's legislative session meetings. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the work session of January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution Two of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Boyer and Ritter LLC to perform the city's annual audit and financial report for the third, for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, in an addendum to the professional service agreement related to the two thousand and twenty-two annual audit. Uh, we had a presentation on behalf of the administration by the accounting manager, Mr. Brian McCutcheon. Um, the cost for completing the two thousand and twenty-three audit is listed not to exceed one hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. There was also an addendum to increase the previous contract for the two thousand and twenty-two audit by twenty-eight thousand dollars uh, due to a delay with some, um, with the city being able to get some of the information needed to the auditors in the expected timeframe. Um, there weren't any questions from my council members and I would ask my colleagues to support this resolution.
Thank you. The next report you will hear will be delivered by our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis, on the work session of January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, we discussed Resolution One dash two thousand and twenty-five, which is a resolution allocating the remaining emergency solution grants program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and authorizing expenditure of such funds, ratifying the expenditure of grant administration costs and extending the subrecipient agreements until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Samuel Sokowski, Director of Administration, was in attendance and filled in for Director Martin Roberts, the Building and Housing Director. To start, the remaining balance to, to be allocated was in question. However, our computer system was inoperable during our work session meeting. It made it a little impossible to reference the resolution during discussions. Mr. Sokowski shared that the grant administration cost goes towards offsetting salaries and the remaining appropriations would go to the three recipients listed in the resolution, CCU, YWCA, and Shalom House. Council members asked multiple questions and a few of those questions are why the Capital Area Coalition of Homelessness is not included in the list for appropriations for this round of funding? Who discovered the fifty-five thousand, five hundred, twenty-nine dollars? When was it discovered? Did the entries enter their annual action plan? Why wasn't all of the money allocated in two thousand and twenty-one? Can you provide the regulation that depicts the two-year window for spending and the extension letter? Why were applications not extended to other entities and organizations in the city? Many questions could not be answered. Mr. Sokowski said that he would get the answers to council's questions in about a week since we are getting close to the March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five deadline to allocate the funds given to us by HUD, excuse me. Councilman Rodriguez mentioned it would be nice to have the directors of the organizations come in for a few questions. And the Law Bureau suggested council coordinate, invite the recipients to the meeting. I submitted that the resolution be moved to the next legislative session in one week in anticipation of having council's concerns addressed adequately for Resolution One dash two thousand and twenty-five. This is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Councilwoman Daniels is no longer, is she still on virtually? Okay, I couldn't see.
Oh, yes, I'm still on.
Final committee report will be delivered on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee by our co- committee chair, Councilwoman Daniels. I apologize, I couldn't see that you were still on.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the Community Economic Development, uh, met, uh, committee met, um, to discuss Resolution eighty-one hyphen two thousand and twenty-four, which, um, was an approval, a request for a lot consolidation of lots, one thousand and one North Eighteenth Street, eighteen hundred Fourth Street and an adjacent parcel. Um, the participants indicated that, um, the building that's going to go on those lots is a forty-eight unit residential building, um, there, there will all be affordable housing units. And that they initially, uh, uh, initial stages of the project, um, there are a lot of concerns from local neighbor, neighbors, but that they have engaged in extensive communications with the neighborhood and the residents and that they have addressed many of their concerns and they're still, uh, working with them as they develop and, uh, the, the project. That was pretty much it for the committee's business and, um, I would recommend that we vote, uh, to approve the consolidation.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for, uh, consideration this evening is Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final land consolidation and land development plan submitted by Amber Barelli, representing Latino Connection Foundation to consolidate three parcels, ten oh one North Eighteenth Street, eighteen hundred Boa Street, and unaddressed parcel and develop a four-story, forty-eight unit residential building with associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-four?
Just a, just a comment about, um, some of the things that we asked. And, uh, we did receive, uh, a good response of some of the things that we need far as the lighting and all of those other plans that you guys have. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, President Bowers. I had a question in reference to the parking. I know that there's forty-seven parking spaces. Was wondering if there are any parking for, extra parking spaces anywhere for visitors? Or would they just park on the street?
I didn't get it. You, you would have to suspend the rules to have that discussion?
Oh.
Excuse me one second. Um, I will entertain a motion to sus- to suspend the rules for discussion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can you please repeat your question just for the record to make sure everybody heard it the first time?
Yes. I know that there are forty-seven parking spaces for the residents. I was wondering if there are any extra spaces anywhere for visitors? Or are visitors just, you know, expected to park on street parking? That's.
Thank you for that question. Unfortunately, no, there's not going to be additional visitor parking spaces. Um, however, not every unit is going to have a car. We anticipate, um, generally, I believe when you talk about affordable housing for seniors, there's a different parking standard. It's a half a space per unit, generally anticipated for senior housing due to the fact that a lot of, you know, the percentage of seniors that don't drive. So unfortunately, there won't be visitor spots. We'll have those forty-seven spots, um, available to residents, um, but there won't be a visitor spot.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
That was a great question though. Um, so I'll take it most of the seniors will be on the first level so it's easily accessible far as their parking?
It's all seniors, so they'll be on all four levels. Yep, all forty-eight units is going to be seniors, so they'll be on all levels.
Well, the ADA, let me say that on the first.
The ADA units. I believe they are. I would have to look back at our plans, but I'm, I'm, I believe they're on the first floor.
Any other final questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So before us, we have Resolution eighty-one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mrs. Truesdale, could you please read it one more time?
Resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final lot consolidation and land development plan submitted by Amber Barelli, representing Latino Connection Foundation to consolidate three parcels, ten oh one North Eighteenth Street, eighteen hundred Boa Street, and an unaddressed parcel and develop a four-story, forty-eight unit residential building with associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Hmm, yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eighty-one, two thousand and twenty-four passes by vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution One of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution One, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution allocating the remaining energy solution grants program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and authorizing expenditure of such funds, ratifying the expenditure of grant administration costs and extending the subrecipient agreements until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Uh, council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so before us, we have Resolution One of two thousand and twenty-five. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis, to lead discussion.
Thank you, President Bowers. Okay, we have. Do we have enough mics for everyone to, to use? Okay. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and allow everyone to just introduce themselves before I begin.
Good evening, council. My name is Daryl Reinfeld. I'm Executive Director of Christian Churches United. Thanks for having us here.
Good evening. My name is Mary Quinn. I'm the CEO of the YWCA Greater Harrisburg.
Gloria Martin Roberts, interim director, Economic Development, Building and Housing Department.
And Sam Sokowski, Business Administrator.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. I am going to read a little bit of, uh, share a little bit of information, uh, just to get, get us all updated and to make sure that the public hears everything that we've gone over so far, then I'll open it up for questions. Thank you. Last thir- last Tuesday, during our work session, questions about the emergency solutions grant asked by council members could not be answered fully. I met with interim director Martin Roberts on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five for the purpose of obtaining information and answers to questions that council asked regarding the ESG grant. Members of the administration were in attendance. To date, council has received a copy of the correspondence between HUD, the previous director- the previous director of the Building and Housing Department, and the current director of the Building and Housing Department, in which we can draw some of the answers to our questions. The delay in spending of the remaining funds was primarily due to a change in leadership within the Building and Housing Department. The transition period resulted in some disruption as the previous director could not fully address or communicate the outstanding financial obligations, including bringing down the total grant amount because the director's position was vacant and her successor had not been hired yet. Also, it was HUD that discovered the unexpected funds through the ESG financial summary per the March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, letter addressed to the previous director, Ms. Hill. The remaining total of funds to be allocated is equal to fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, of which ten thousand, four hundred, sixty-one dollars and one cent would be for grant administration, leaving a balance of forty-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, which would be divided equally and allocated to each recipient. Each recipient is required to match the funding allotted to them, and a soft match could be agreed upon. Monetary value of non-cash contributions, personnel, goods, services, et cetera. There are only two recipients that qualify for this ESG grant fund. It is CCU, Christian Churches United, and the YWCA. Shalom House has problems that make them ineligible for an allocation of grant funding at this time. I'm told the heat is off, the pipes burst, and there is water built up in the building. I personally drove past the facility, as it is in my neighborhood, to find a padlock on the door, and the handicap accessible ramp did not appear to be cleaned off from the snowstorm. The Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness qualified for a subplot of funding that was appropriated from the two thousand twenty-one allocation and has already received that money. Okay, I'll open up the floor for questions from my colleagues at this time. I'll start with Councilwoman Daniels.
No questions.
Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. I think the, one of the questions that I asked was answered in, in your statement there, which is, was how was the money discovered and how come it took so long for us to, to find out? So, was, it was HUD who discovered it, and we're just acting on it, so, thank you. That's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance this evening. I think it's helpful for us to sort through some of the questions that were asked of the business administrator last week. So I just wanted to note and make sure that I'm clear on the timeline of communication with HUD regarding this funding. So the first letter was received March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's, it is addressed to the former Building and Housing Department Director. And this is, it shares what? Ms. Martin Roberts, it shares what? It details, what does it detail here in this letter?
Did we provide you with a copy?
You did, but the, nobody that is watching or listening can hear it, so if you wouldn't mind sharing.
That, um, uh, action had to be taken in terms of expenditure of these funds. And that there were timelines given, and the timeframe, the balances and so forth. This was sent to Denise Hill on March eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four. It wasn't responded to, so I received a communication, or the department received a communication from HUD indicating that this hadn't been responded to. And we requested that we be able to provide what they call a workout plan, which would list for the feds how we will spend this money within the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four timeline. I had not received anything, any communication back from them for several months, so I contacted them, and on the November eleventh, they responded to me. And I said, "Well, there's no way we can spend this money by December thirty-first." So they, we requested an extension to March thirty-first. These are dollars that will support services for the homeless population. And so they gave us the extension for our workout plan for these dollars until March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. If we do not spend these funds, we will return them.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the workout plan was requested in the initial letter on March eighteenth. Then the next communication is from you to HUD, July twelfth of two thousand and twenty-four. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then that's when the workout plan, the workout plan was submitted for their review and approval, okay. And then November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, that's when we received, or you received an indication that the workout plan was accepted? And then the extension was granted?
Uh huh, was granted.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so just for everyone's reference, the city's workout plan includes the timeframe for expending the remaining balances of funds, and two, the actions the city will take to ensure that the remaining funds are expended within that timeframe. Just wanted to note that. So we, we don't have a copy of the workout plan. Is that something that's available?
I can have that sent to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions. I just wanted, one, someone that could answer our questions present, and two, to make sure that I was clear on the timeline.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Davis, and thank you all for being here tonight. And one of my questions were answered, just how the money was discovered. That was my question as well, so that was answered. But I did have just two other questions. One of my questions were, do we have any idea why all of the money was not allocated in two thousand and twenty-one? Like, were there not enough applications? Just, just the reason why there was money left over, since it is such a pressing topic on this money, how it helps the community, so just wondering why it wasn't all allotted?
I can't be for certain. I wasn't here. This was under the former director. It's my understanding that apparently when she came down to council for approval for this money, that the total amount that was given to us by HUD was not presented to you.
Oh. Okay. So, like, it wasn't said how much was really given from HUD to the city, or?
No, she had the amount.
And it's in the resolution, that this balance that you're voting on tonight is the exact same balance that's noted in the original resolution, has not yet allocated? And this is an educated guess on my part. We were having a number of programs, including all the extra COVID money at the time. If you remember, we had a bunch of extra pots of money. And we were having trouble getting enough applicants for all the money. And we had to spend the COVID money first, ahead of all other money.
Okay.
And so that was, so sort of a hierarchy, and we weren't the only ones in that situation. So you can't award an application for more money than was asked.
No, I understand. I was just wondering, like, was, did we not have enough people apply? Or just wondering why it all wasn't?
On this particular one, it's very few people that would be eligible.
Okay.
And I can't tell you for a hundred percent, because I wasn't the one processing them, but that was in that time period, twenty and twenty-one. We kept having that experience where the money came from federal government, and we didn't have applicants in the immediate first rounds to fulfill, to spend the money.
And you also said we had to spend the COVID money first?
Right.
So then, when this money came, some entities already got money and, I guess, couldn't reapply?
Or, or, or we had to get that award out the door first?
Okay.
For, for program after program after program.
Okay. I was just wondering, you know, because that's a very needed money within the city, so just wondering why it wasn't all given out, since it's such a huge need for, especially with the unhoused population. Okay, thank you. My last question, resident question actually, was, is there any, is there any funding in the Department of Building and Housing that is still left unexpended to date? Since I know we found this money that we did not spend, is there any other money?
Nothing that has come, brought to my attention by HUD that would deem us noncompliant.
Okay, and needing an extension? Okay, thank you. Those were all my questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls.
You're welcome.
Councilman Jones?
Yes. So I, I don't think, just be clear with me. I think we asked a question last week around why aren't they reapplying? Is this because of the timeline expansion? Why don't they have to reapply for this money?
For one, it's a very, very short extension. And there's only limited people that are eligible. So HUD doesn't require us to have an application process.
Okay.
You know, and so we have, the city is, is, is basically a subrecipient who's, who's granted money to put out into the community for these things. But it's emergency shelter, right? There is only so many people. And there are ones who will never apply. For example, Bethesda Mission, they will not take federal money. They just will not do it because of the strings attached. So these are the ones we had that you could addend a contract for, instead of starting all over again. It takes a while to get a contract together under a federal program to meet, to meet all the requirements.
Okay.
It would be impractical to try and do it in any other way.
I'm just saying, because I, again, I think there was something around the timelines. It was like a two-year period. But if this was in twenty-one, we're all the way at twenty-five. That's a four-year timeline. So there was, let me see, there, there was one correspondence that came out from, from HUD. And there was a second one, but we don't have that document. I think around March and July, between March and July.
So you have, we, the March document came out to the city, and then we have the November document that granted the extension to March thirty-first for the, so that was, that was November twenty-first. We got that letter for city purposes, the exact same time the budget's coming through for, for this. Our office got an inquiry, how to do it, right? And the only method, frankly, practically, is to addendum, to add an addendum to an existing contract, as opposed to starting over.
Okay. So my, my other question would be to Ms. Roberts. Is there any other outstanding money, CDBG, ESG, for any other years? And how are they being addressed?
As I just said to Councilwoman Rawls, I have not been notified by HUD that there are any outstanding funds that would deem us noncompliant.
Okay, noncompliant, but are there any funds that are, because this isn't, this is...
There were some.
Excuse me, excuse me? This, this is not noncompliant here, right? So you...
Oh, it can be a noncompliant issue, yeah, if we don't spend it.
I'm saying this, as I'm asking you right now, this is not noncompliant monies that we're talking about, correct?
No, it's not.
All right, so this is, this is twenty-one. So I'm asking, is there any other years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four? Not that they're not noncompliant, there's still any outstanding money that has not been given out?
My knowledge.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I have one more question.
Councilwoman Davis, is that okay? Just for my information, because my computer's not working, so I can't pull up anything, and ECO still has Resolution one of two thousand twenty-five with Shalom House getting money. So, Councilwoman Davis just said, is there not currently working, or it's not open? So are they still on the resolution to get money, to receive funds from this?
So after meeting with the councilwoman, the mayor, and Ms. Roberts, the law bureau has drafted an amended resolution?
Okay.
And to address that, and, and the idea, the first one was to evenly divide the money between three. Now it's evenly divided amongst two.
Between two.
So there'd have to be a motion once back in session to amend the resolution.
Okay.
Right, we emailed it, but there's also hard copies for everybody here. So, and we have provided those to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. My computer just start working, so it just pulled up, but it wasn't... Which, the email you sent me earlier, I think, had the amendment on there. I can't pull it up on my phone, my email, the email on my phone does not work.
But Jared has a hard copy for you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was... Not to think I didn't think you corrected that, you all do very well with that, but I wanted to make sure for the public, too, that the Shalom House was taken out. Thank you. That's it for me.
Are there any other questions from anyone?
Yes. In the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-four communication, interim director Martin Roberts that you sent to HUD, I wanted to outline two, two things here. First, this was in July. It's noted here that Harrisburg City Council will first need to approve the actions described above. Staff will quickly draft recommendations for county, city council review and approval. Once approved, city staff will ensure that the subrecipient agreements with each organization are executed in a timely manner so that they may begin expending the remaining two thousand and twenty-one ESG funds. July twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, and it is now January, two thousand twenty-five. So I, I'm just...
As I mentioned to you, when I received, when this correspondence came in from HUD, which was March, to the former director?
Correct.
And I got it in July. I was notified in July that I had to respond to this in July to HUD. And then, part of our technical assistance review on these monies required that we submit a workout plan on how these monies, the balance of this money was going to be used. They did not respond to me until November.
Okay.
And so I, I had to contact them, so is there a holdup, or you're not going to approve our plan? And they apologized. They had some staffing changes and so forth, so they apologized. So they then sent me a letter approving it.
Okay, but I do think that something should have been shared with us prior to now. Because it, it just... If this was discovered in July, I do think that we should have been at least made aware that correspondence or some type of indication from HUD was noted. The second thing I wanted to, to highlight here, the City of Harrisburg's Department of Building and Housing Development will be responsible for implementing the actions listed above. Tamika Moore, Program Manager for CDBG and ESG, and Linda McClure, Project Director, Asset Management, will be assigned the responsibility of overseeing these activities and expenditures during the time period of the workout plan, and will provide direct technical assistance to the subrecipients as needed. So I just wanted to note the status of those two employees, and who will be, who, if those employees are not in place, whose responsibility is it to oversee these activities and expenditures during the time period of the workout plan?
Patrice Dawkins and Linda McClure are still with us, and they're working on this. And Tamika Moore is no longer employed by the city.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, President Bowers. Okay, I'm just going to, I'm not sure, okay. So with the changing landscape of the political arena at this time, and the uncertainty surrounding future funding from HUD, we risk facing reduced or no funding in the future. So it is imperative that we maximize the aid available to us now. Again, the ESG funds to the recipients are for the unhoused, rapid rehousing, and emergency shelters in our city. The money must not go unutilized. It's essential that we fulfill our community's pressing needs. And I'm just concerned that if we don't allocate this money...
And I'm just concerned that if we don't allocate this money, we might not ever get any more again. So, um, I submit this-
Well, I think, I, I'm sorry, but I think we need to be concerned with, um, an administration that is interested in recouping money that's improperly allocated. So I'm more concerned about that and jeopardizing already allocated stuff that's rightfully allocated. Um, it would be great if we, yeah, that, that's my thought on that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I didn't understand about the recouping the money. Um, I was just saying that I think it's essential that we, um, allocate this money and utilize it now, it says. So I submit this to,
Well, I have another question before you-
Okay, Councilwoman Jones, I'm lost.
Thank you. Um, uh, how you doing? I have questions for both of you. Um, I know earlier this year, well, last year, you were awarded $500,000 for homeless purposes, right? So how's that working out so far? Does it have open bids and?
Yeah, so our, uh, winter, our shelter, that was a winter shelter now, uh, we will be year round for women and non-binary folks. Uh, it's been open since mid-November. Um, I believe we're averaging between 15 and 20, uh, women there each evening. Um, we have a capacity of 25, so there is, there is space. Um, and, uh, but our, our, our street outreach is out there all the time inviting people to come in.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm definitely familiar with your program, as you know. But, uh, so I would say you'll have a fair amount of reserve left still to get you through the year, even say that this wasn't even allocated to you.
And to be clear, we will not actually be using this money for shelter because we have that funding for shelter. Um, as it was stated, this can be used for rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. Um, and in reality, because of the short timeframe of the spending, um, you know, we're actually pretty limited in what we can use it for in that timeframe, so. Um, but we're very familiar with the grant rules and, you know, believe that we can expend it in the timeframe.
And just for our listeners and viewers, um, can you explain some of the services that you provide to our unhoused population? How some of this money is being used?
Yes, um, so, again, uh, the rapid rehousing type program is where we can, uh, help provide security deposit and rent and case management to get people off the streets. And it's prioritized for the people that are the most vulnerable on the streets. Um, and the homeless prevention is to prevent families from being homeless, uh, to help pay, you know, back rent and to keep them off the streets.
Okay, and same questions for you. You know, uh, how are your program, how is your program going now? And, um, as he just said, that he may be using his money a little differently, so can you tell us how you're going to utilize these funds?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, the money's already spent, the extra money that you've given to us because we're in a hundred thousand dollar deficit right now, just for emergency shelter. So, you know, we really appreciate you guys allocating this extra fund to us. It's gonna just kind of go right in the bucket. And so, you know, our emergency shelter is a little different and from, from what Daryl is doing. Um, we are a coordinated system of entries, so all of the shelters are part of this coordinated system where we're, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for people to come into shelter and that they're going to the right place. So as the YWCA, while we do, do serve men up, up on our, um, main campus, we're only housing women. So our emergency shelter is for women and children and we have 20 beds. In total, we have 113 beds, but they're all kind of allocated for different things. So 20 beds are for emergency shelter, 20 beds are for SRO, 16 beds are for domestic violence. So many beds are for bridge, so many are for transitional. But we do, as, as soon as you come in to emergency shelter, an emergency situation, you have that immediate 28-day stay. And then we're looking, you know, we're providing all of those supports along the way. We're, we're seeing, you know, kind of what's the root cause that brought you here? What can we offer you?
When I was on that.
In terms, yeah, so, right, we don't want to just have somebody in for 28 days and turn them back out. So we want them to be self-sustaining. We want to make sure that we can offer as many supports and possibilities to get them, you know, into that permanent housing. So, you know, our goal really is to give them that 28-day stay, get them stable. A lot of times there's a lot of addiction and mental health and we really gotta like address that. After that, we're gonna look and say, hey, you know, what are your goals? You, you know what's best for you. We don't want to say what's best for you. Do you need counseling? Do you need legal assistance? Because we can help with that. Do you need, um, help finding a job? Because we have jobs programs. And if we can't figure out what the next step is, then either we're gonna work with other, uh, nonprofits in the area or, or we're gonna get you, um, an application into our longer stay. So that's how that works. But, um, the money we receive for the city to support this only covers about, I think it's 11% of the actual cost of, to run that program. So we have to fundraise, we get a little bit of money from, um, the county and we used to get some money from United Way and the rest of it, we all, we have to fundraise.
Sounds like a lot of shelters around here, but at least you guys are earning. You're going out and get some of your own money. I appreciate that. The other thing that I will say to, um, aftercare, are you guys tracking? Um, and after the 28-day stay, this is for both of you, Daryl, you as well, um, I don't mean to bombard you, but I do want to get some, flush some of this stuff out. Uh, their aftercare, are you tracking these individuals? Um, how many times are they able to come as much as needed? You know, the same individuals, what I'm saying, you know? Um, and I heard you say something about you sharing, are you guys sharing information amongst, amongst the other organizations? Say, hey, we're full here over at CCU, go over to-
Yeah, so, you, you know, the YW, you can't walk into the YWCA and say, hey, do you have any rooms open? That's all done through a coordinated system, unless you're a victim of domestic violence. You can walk in our door 24 hours a day, say, I'm a victim and we're gonna, we're gonna triage you right there. But yeah, if you're a homeless individual in the city of Harrisburg, I guess it's the county. Um, yeah, you're gonna go to the, the help office and they're gonna decide where the best day is for you. Because if you're a single man, it's not us. Um, you know, they're not gonna send you to us, so that's, that's how that coordination works.
Yeah, I mean, one of the requirements of this grant is that you're participating in the joint database, which we're both a part of. And again, that's one of the reasons that there's sort of limited organizations that can actually receive this grant because it is, I mean, it's a, it's a sort of a big process to, to be a part of that. So we do use that to sort of track, try to keep track of where people are going and certainly are trying to follow people as much as we can. You know, if they're not succeeding in shelter the first time, you know, staying in touch with them, figuring out what are the barriers to housing.
Yeah, thank you, and that's very important. Um, I'm glad you guys are doing that type of in-depth, um, eval. Because a lot of, uh, places, like I said before, you know, when we're dealing with these populations, a lot of people, if I'm giving you a hot meal today and a coke tomorrow, in five years down the line, you're still in my line, did I really help you? Or did I become an enabler? You know, so we gotta get to the root of some of those causes of how people got in those positions. So I just wanted to talk that out, so our listeners can hear and just know that we're not just throwing money anywhere just because people say things. So I just wanted to make sure that we were able to talk that out, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, and thank you for being here and thank you for all the work that you do. Um, I'm familiar with your programs. You've helped friends, people that I know, I'm sure we all are. But, um, yes, thank you very much for everything that you do for our unhoused population.
Councilwoman Davis, just one last, just legal point in terms of the city's role as a direct recipient. If the money is not, uh, out of the city's hands by March 31st, then it is subject to recapture by HUD on this extension. And the second tier of that, recognizing the federal government's in the middle of chaos or change, is that typically what that happens is then your next year's allotment gets reduced because you didn't spend your prior year's allotment. And, and obviously the, the homeless need in the city, if we're, we're walking around, is, is growing exponentially, it seems, for everybody. Just so, just for the public and the council, that, that is the system we are placed into. It's, it's not our system, but that is the federal system.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to, um, recommend that my colleagues vote in favor of this resolution. And would I turn this?
Gotta unsuspend the rules.
Hold on, are you finished with any questions or comments?
Yes, I'm finished with everything.
Okay. So we, I will entertain a motion to resume our legislative session.
So move.
Is there a second? Okay. So before us, we have Resolution One of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it one more time?
Resolution One, 2025. A resolution allocating the remaining Emergency Solution Grants Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2021 and authorizing expenditure of such funds, ratifying the expenditure of grant administration costs and extending the sub-recipient agreements until March 31st, 2025.
And we would note that we have an amended version.
I was getting ready to note that. Council members should have received, along with interim director Martin Roberts, a, an email that was sent at 5:39 PM by the Law Bureau with an attachment of an amended Bill One of 2025. We also have hard copies here. So I would like to know what the pleasure is of council members. Would you like time to review this amended Bill One of 2025? Or would you like to cast your vote now? I just wanted to note in the November 21st, 2024 correspondence from HUD, in the very last paragraph, it notes, "This office approves the city's request to extend the expenditure deadline from September 12th, 2023, to March 31st, 2025, to allow the fiscal year 2021 ESG funds to be committed and expended no later than March 31st, 2025. We do require that interim reports on expenditure process be submitted on a bimonthly basis." Now for clarification, Solicitor Grover, you noted that this funding has to be out of the city's hands by March 31st, 2025? Is that correct?
That is my understanding from, uh, looking at the process, yes.
Okay. So for clarification, council members, what is your pleasure? Would you like time to review amended, the amended version of Bill One of 2025? Or would you like to take action this evening?
Uh, for me, normally, you know, I, I hate getting these things in the last minute to, to not actually have an opportunity to go through everything with a thorough lens. However, you did say you'll be able to get this money. How, how soon will you be able to get this money? I mean, you know, out.
Is that a question for the administration?
No, I can't, yeah, right, right, yeah, I'm sorry. But, um, for me, I, 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 I believe I'm willing to cast a vote tonight. I can't speak for everyone else.
I'll say, um, it looks like it's a minor change. It doesn't like it's a huge, like rewriting the entire thing. I believe it's, um, splitting it between two entities instead of three because the one entity is not able to, to accept the money because of the position they're in right now. So, um, it doesn't seem like it's a substantive change, like it's not changing what's happening with the money or, you know, anything major on that end, so I'll be okay with, um, with casting this vote.
Any other comments?
No, I'm also okay with casting the vote. There were minor changes. My questions were answered. Um, I know there was a switching of, um, I don't want to say the guard, that's not the right word, but positions with directors. Um, and some things may have, um, been unseen or fell through, but I just hope moving forward, we don't have to be in this position where, uh, money is, is found or it wasn't, um, allocated. Um, especially money that deals with our most vulnerable population. So I just, that's my only issue moving forward, but I am ready to cast a vote.
Any other comments?
Yes, President Bowers, I'm prepared to cast a vote, vote. I pretty much understand what has taken place from the documents, from reading the, uh, change in the vacant lot space, which allowed some things to fall through the cracks, so that's understandable to me, so I'm, I'm ready to cast a vote.
Okay. So before us, we have Bill One of 2025. Oh, I'm sorry, Resolution One of 2025 as amended. Is there any final questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution One of 2025 as amended? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution One, 2025, as amended, passes by a vote of five to one.
Council members, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Two of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Two, 2025. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Boyer and Ritter LLC to perform the city of Harrisburg's annual audit and financial report for the year ending December 31st, 2023, and in a denim to the professional services agreement related to the 2022 annual audit.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution Two of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Two, 2025, passes by a vote of six to zero.
Resolution Three of 2025, Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Three, 2025. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Hail Seon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments or concerns related to Resolution Three of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Three, 2025, passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Four of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Four, 2025. A resolution ratifying the 2024 Application for the Recycling Development and Implementation Grant under Section 902 of the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling and Waste Reduction Act, Act 101, for the city of Harrisburg and authorizing the city of Harrisburg to execute any slash all forms required relating to this subsequent award of $200,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new leaf truck.
Thank you. Resolution Four of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Five of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Five, 2025. A resolution approving the first proposed 2025 budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain 2024 budget year encumbered commitments and to reaffirm certain 2024 capital project appropriations.
Thank you. Resolution Five of 2025 will also move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Council members, uh, is there any old business for discussion? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Seeing and hearing none, the time is 7:57 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.